Good afternoon and welcome to the August 3rd City Council Meeting. Commissioner Smith, if you'd go as the prayer pledge and the fact of the day please, sir.
If you would have sent that to the prayer. Our Father God, we come once again thankful for the mere blessings that are stored upon us. Thank for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Apopka. We ask for the Lord to continue to lead us, guide us, and direct us in all that we shall see and do. We will be pleasing and acceptably in your sight. Blessed are the Father, these are in the chambers that he will fear your spirit in your presence. Thank you in thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The fact of the day. On August 3rd, 1958, the US Nuclear Submarine Nucleus accomplished the first undersea voyage to the geographic north pole. The world's first nuclear submarine, the Anorakulus, dived at Point Barrel, Alaska, and traveled nearly 1,000 miles under the Arctic ice cap to reach the top of the world. It then steamed on to Iceland, pioneering a new and shorter route from the Pacific to the Atlantic and Europe. Thought for the fact of the day.
Okay, we're gonna jump right into it. Doctor Chikinya Jackson, come on up. We're gonna have a presentation on the Apopka Youth Works program, our recap for this summer.
Mayor, Council, Chikinya Harris-Jackson, Grand Administrator for the city. Today I have a few special guests with me. I would like to have a few of the students just sharing their experience. We also have one of our former interns here who you may have seen her on TV. She's a local celebrity now. We have her here with us and we also have a few guests from Career Source that we will have share, okay? First up, I have Ms. Madison Brown with me.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Madison Brown and this summer I was able to participate in the six-week program with Apopka Youth Works. I was able to be an architectural intern at the company Scott &amp; Crimea, which for those of you who don't know is an architectural firm located in Maitland, Florida. During my time there, I was able to get more practice using a program called Revit, which I learned is a commonly-used program in professional architecture environments. I was also able to go on a few site visits and see what goes into actually creating a building. My time here has also allowed me to observe the work environment and see how an architecture term, uh, firm runs. Before this experience, I thought that architects were working in a student, studio environment where they would occasionally meet with clients and work on projects all on their own. Now I see that they collaborate more on projects and work together to meet deadlines. Being an architect is more, is a more technical job than I thought it would be, but there are still times when creativity and ideas are necessary. After this experience, I feel more prepared to study architecture in the fall and I feel much more confident in my decision to study architecture. I'm so grateful for the opportunity I was given to intern at this company. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up I have Ms. Angelina Adam. She was able to participate in the Valencia Accelerate Program and she will talk about her culinary experience.
Good afternoon. I was allowed to be part of the summer youth program. I've participated in this program for the last three summers. This summer I was included in their culinary program through Valencia Community College. Throughout the culinary program, we were provided fresh ingredients every Monday morning. Groceries were dropped off at my door through Instacart. I think this made this experience much easier and accessible to all the participants. This program increased my knowledge of the kitchen and encouraged me to cook new foods. I wouldn't have imagined to cook dishes like French onion soup, beef stew, chicken gumbo, cheese souffle, and quiche. There were many more delicious dishes, but those were some of my favorites. Because of this culinary program, my family and I were able to try new foods and learn the process of each dish. As participants, we accessed all the information we needed for each dish through Canvas. This, the chef held Zoom meetings on Thursdays, Wednesdays, and Tuesdays. During the Zoom meetings, he would make the dish we were assigned to and answered any questions we had. He would later then post the video of the meeting so we could watch it back if we needed help. During the last week of the program, participants can get a Surf Safe certificate by completing the Surf Safe course. Being a part of this program made this summer a summer to remember. Not only was I able to cook and taste new foods, but I also got paid to do so.
This year was extra special because Coca-Cola joined us again and we were able to place four students, I believe, at Coca-Cola and one of our former AYW students was able to mentor. Natalie Carpio, do you mind coming up and sharing with us?
Good afternoon, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Good. Feel free to ask me questions as I go. It'll be very brief, but I want to express how grateful I am to the Apopka Youth Program. I participated in the program two, twice, two summers, okay? And both were with Coca-Cola. So what does the city of Apopka represent to Natalie Carpio? Recently, I was a participant in a news channel, Channel 13. Apopka is my home. It's where I've grown up. It's also where I've educated myself and where I currently work. And it's all, it was all possible to, Apopka Youth Works, they opened a door for me and then it was at that point where I made the choice, right? As to what I wanted to do with the opportunity. Today, I am perceived as a leader in my role. From my, not only from just my actions, but also from how I present myself. My coworkers always mention how great of a pleasure it is to be in my presence and with my news article. You know, people that are well beyond their middle ages have mentioned how inspired they feel by my commentaries. Now, the program, why is it worth it? It's worth to invest in our youth because the world changes and it's constantly changing. But the key thing to remember is that our youth needs to be inspired and they need to be given the confidence to continue to grow and become leaders of our society. And that is why I am very confidently standing here in front of you all in the audience. Good afternoon. Because I plan to continue giving back to my community and to contributing to this program. So thank you all for your time today.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Mimi here from Career Source. And Mimi, we are, you and your staff have been just a blessing to the city. Your partnership, we wouldn't be able to do this without you. We do have a plaque for you all. Mimi, I don't know if you want to come up and say something also, but council, you all know that Career Source has been our partner since 2015. You all have been here and seen the growth and I thank you for your continued support.
I come with just gratitude and pride. I mean, how great is that to hear Madison and Angela tell those stories and be able to have you, who is a intern yourself, now turn around and be able to mentor others and take them on at Coca-Cola and with the leadership of Dr. Chikinya Jackson. I mean, it's, it's just been stellar. So I'm very grateful for it. I'm glad you recognize it as something that's valuable to the city and we hope to continue doing it. So way to go, guys. Can we get a picture, Mimi?
Yes, yeah. Oh, we're gonna get a picture.
In Career Source.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up Bradley Williams, recap, recap for the summer camps.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Bradley Williams, Parks and Rec Director. I'm here to give a brief presentation of an initial recap of our summer camp program out at Camp Weewah. The Weewah facility brought a whole new list of activities that we could bring to our summer camp programming offered in Apopka. Right here, we've listed out some of those new activities. Rock Wall, which is affectionately known as the Goliath. Archery, canoeing, arts and crafts, a low ropes challenge team course, the Gaga Pit, which is a very popular camp game, a variety of sports, including basketball and the new basketball courts that were installed, and campfire opportunities. So a whole new list of opportunities that were brought because of Camp Weewah that we traditionally would not run in a day camp program through our summer camp. Just some quick stats from our day camp side. The program went, ran a full nine weeks. We had 186, or 100, I'm sorry, 860 total enrolled throughout the summer. That's an average of about 96 campers per week and that fluctuates for week, from week to week. Sometimes we had 110, sometimes we had about 90. So it kind of varied throughout the summer. Seventy-five percent of our day camp participants were city of Apopka residents. So it's a high resident service there. Camp revenue came in at 122,709.50 and we hired on an additional 25 seasonal camp staff to run that program. And there's just a couple photos there highlighting some of the kid activities. Fishing was a very popular activity this summer. All the kids loved getting out there on the dock and catching fish. Picture of the Gaga Pit, which again is a very popular camp game. And then of course canoeing and kayaking was a, was a hit as well. So the day camp program was a great success. Our overnight camp stats, we ran this program for four weeks and that was through July. There were a total of 83 campers. If you'll notice, the resident, non-resident split reverses on overnight camp. We had 15% resident participation. Camp revenue came in at 112,579.50 and we hired an additional eight seasonal overnight camp staff. Those were separate staff from the day camp staff. And pictured here is an activity the overnight camp did. It's a wishboat ceremony and basically they have an opportunity to take a palm frond, design it into a boat, decorate it, place a candle on it, and they try and float it across the pool. If it makes it to the other side of the pool, their wishes are gonna be granted. So fun activity that the kids enjoyed.
How much that gonna cost us?
What's that?
I said, how much is that gonna cost us?
And we have begun our parent feedback through a survey. Just wanted to share some, some positive remarks we received from both day camp parents and overnight camp parents. Some highlights of the, of the survey so far, this was as of yesterday. We had 65 responses. Eighty percent of those were from day camp parents. Twenty percent were from overnight. The overall experience metric, 46% indicated it exceeded their expectations. Thirty-eight said it met. So those are, those are really good numbers. Eighty-nine percent recommend the program, would recommend the program to a friend or family. And then just some stats on where they learned about the camp program. So you see our city website garnered the largest share at 47%. Facebook came in second at 20%. So majority of our advertising was captured through online forums, through website, and Facebook. At this time, I'll open it up for if anybody has any questions.
Any, any questions?
No, just, I think it's really cool, 25% non-residents for, for day camp. I, I know it's not a huge number, but I think it's cool that we're still bringing, it's doing exactly what this camp is supposed to be doing. Not only bringing just our residents, but local people as well, which I really like. The other thing that, just the one thing I know that is kind of a relevant thing right now, the director of Weewah, Gary, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so coming into my role, I'm a, I've been observing and evaluating the processes, policies, procedures in the department, how we're executing. And camp, with camp running was a highlight of my focus through the summer. And after observing and evaluating how the program ran, how the facility was running, kind of the preparation, planning, and processes in place, it was just time for us to make a move to a new opportunity. So this facility, this program is, is a gem of Apopka. This is only the first year and we've got our sights set, our sights set very high into lofty goals of making this thing and this facility top-notch throughout the state.
Thank you.
Can you just touch on, is there anything further that we need to kind of upgrade or renovate within Camp Weewah that will make it a better experience and kind of encourage more campus? I know that we were challenged by the hiring of staff because that was why the number was kind of limited because of staff.
Yeah, so.
Seasonal staff, I should say.
It's seasonal staff. And seasonal staff is very important to get out ahead of the game and get those positions advertised early because people make plans for the summer. So getting ahead of the game on that, making sure we're advertised early for that. As far as the facility, it's just some general upkeep, some fresh paint on some, some of the cabins. And the big thing is some ADA sidewalks that we're gonna have to install throughout the property. But other than that, the camp is standing in pretty good shape. We are looking to do some replacement of the high ropes course, which is the high challenge team course this next fiscal year. And that'll be another amenity that will be attractive for people to come to the camp program.
So with summer over and the schools open, what are the plans for Camp Weewah during the winter months?
Yep, so the plans are to, this is a rental facility as well. So we're attracting private groups to come in, do overnight camping on property. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, they're gonna be involved in renting the facility. We're also going to be doing some of those maintenance upkeep items. And then with the pool, there's some opportunities to get some partnerships going to run some programming out of that facility as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, great trajectory for first year and, you know, maybe of course marking out a state for the snowbirds that want to come down and escape to Florida over the winter.
Right.
Overall experience, 84%, 89 would recommend. How do we get to 100 on those? What are the, what are the comments or things that people see that are opportunities for us to get back?
Right. And some of that goes back to kind of the assessment I've gone through. It's structure, planning, and communication. You know, making sure that we have a plan put together, communicate it to the parents, and then we follow through on that trajectory. So it's, it's very key to make sure we are executing what we're, what we're providing and offering. So we'll get there. Those are some of the tweaks that, that we'll be making as we move towards next summer. But it's very achievable to get that next notch up and we should be floating in that 95% range of exceeding and meets categories.
So nothing facility-wise, everybody's pleased with that. Obviously for a first year, those are to be expected.
First year, yeah, first year, kind of stress tests. Yep, stress tests on the, the facilities have been sitting empty for a while. So there's definitely improvements and little tweaks we can do. Nothing major. Some roofs we're looking at, but from a grounds perspective and the cabin side, we're looking good there. It's just gonna be some additional cleanup to get it to that next level.
I think we ought to aim at corporate market out there to bring them down and put them on the challenge course.
Retreats too, and that's where the high ropes course will help with that because it's a team-building activity and it's something we can advertise to the corporations to say, hey, come out, spend the day. We've got a program in place. Here's what you'll do. Here's where, you know, here's where we're gonna take you at the end of the day. And really give an opportunity for those companies to build team-building atmosphere. And it's a challenge, so it's a technical challenge.
And I think it'll work great too as well with our, our new birding facility, the different things that we're doing there, the whole ecotourism. This will be a great place and nice camp.
Right. Yeah, I'm excited about that too because it's the proximity and then the opportunity of that partnership to also improve our Weewah offering is gonna be amazing.
Great.
Great job, took off, you defeat running for this first year and our numbers look good. And just keep improving and keep drawing that crowd.
Appreciate it. Certainly, certainly do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Good. All right, thank you Bradley. Thanks for all your work and to help the whole team, you know, thank you, thank you. We went out there and cooked lunch for them on Wednesday just to kind of thank them all, all the summer staff because, you know, they worked hard and it's, you know, it was, it was, it was a team effort.
It's a long, hot summer and, you know, that many kids in one area. It can present challenges, but they did a great job and we're excited. We'll hopefully have most of them back next year.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. No, no, you're, no, you, you got, you're, you're coming, you're coming.
I'll come?
Yes, yes ma'am. I wouldn't, I would not forget you. We got, you'll be under public comment. You're on, I got one present, I got two more presentations, so. All right. Just want to kind of go over with everybody some of the road improvements we've got coming up. I know you've seen a lot of the, the cones out on, on 441 from Central, you know, back toward, you know, the 429. And so I just want to kind of go those, go through those. I don't, can you do that for me Pam? Yeah, so anyway, first of all, I mean, to start out, we got, I know that you've seen, it was in the newsletter, our weekly newsletter. For, for those that haven't gotten our weekly newsletter, this week we've got the Florida Department of Transportation, the 441 resurfacing from the 429 connector out to Jones Avenue. So that's, although it's not in Apopka, it, it does help as you come into Apopka from the north. So anyway, the first, as we come up 441 from the north going south, this is the first big intersection. It's the 441 and the Arrow State Parkway intersection. And I don't know if you remember, about a year ago, we had a big, the big billboard that we were able to negotiate a deal with the Crosby's to take that out and now we've got, now we have a four-way light there so they can go into that, that whole complex there on the, on the south side of 441. But what we've done there is we've modified the coming from Arrow onto 441 so that we've got a left turn lane and then a right and a straight through turn or through lane. That'll help the, the traffic flowing out of Arrow getting onto 441 or across over to the Medical Plaza. This required some shaving of the median a little so there's enough room for both lanes, but not almost unnoticedable. As you know, the, the design, we've completed design, going to permits now and we hope to start construction this year and hopefully done in five to eight months. So this will make a huge improvement at Arrow and we're, we're excited to be able to get those folks out onto 441, either to 429 or the 451 and on, on, onto their destinations. Next up, we got the 441 and Bradshaw Road intersection improvements. We're in, upgrading this intersection to mast arms and we're adding some protected left turn lanes onto 441. The design is at 90% complete. Construction will start in the fall. Another one of those mast arms, because of the, the backlog and supply chains, it's, you know, gonna be five to eight months after notice to proceed. So we're, big, big improvements there, which, you know, has been one of our kind of areas of almost, probably most pedestrian fatalities have been at that, right into that, that area of that intersection. Next up, we got the 441 and South Hawthorne intersection. This is the first place where we have a median. I don't know how well it shows up on there. It's, but we've got a median to protect some left turns. It will restrict the left turns at Hawthorne and at First Street. Yeah, there you go. So what we're trying to do is these, the left turns out there are where we run into, you know, because of the traffic on 441, we've just gotta be careful that we don't have too many access points with a left turn. And so trying to restrict those left turns is really, really important. Next up, we got the 441 and the South Lake intersection. This is our second median. It'll prohibit left turns from the side streets to US 441 and left turns from US 441 to Lake Avenue and East Fifth Street. Another one of those areas where we were just trying to limit the traffic going with a left turn, which will limit our crashes and fatalities. Next up, we've got the 441 in South Washington. Another one where we've got all these, these roads, you know, we've got not just squared up. It's not 90-degree turns. It's, you know, we've got side, side streets that come in. So we've, this is our, where we have our third median. And we had to negotiate with DOT. They, they didn't want to, they wanted to have a, a complete median across, which would have limited the AOK. Their big trucks coming out of their facility onto 441, they needed a left turn. And so we, we're, because of our great relationship with the DOT folks, we were able to kind of skinny it up a little bit so they can get the left turn out of there because those big trucks, you know, which is a big part of their business, need to be able to make that left turn. Now DOT has let us know though, if, if, if we start to see too many accidents at that, at that intersection, that they could end up closing that, that off. So we're hoping that we do a good job there and that that, that will remain open, keeping AOK up and, up and running with their, their big trucks. Next up, we've got the, it's kind of a subtle thing, but, but if, if you're coming from North 441 into town at Central, the, the road doesn't quite match up. I mean, I don't know if you, if you noticed that, but we're trying to kind of skinny that up so that it, it starts to match from, from west of Central to east of Central just to make it a little, flow a little better. So we'll, we'll have a median there, which will help with the better alignment of the 441. Next up, I'm so excited. I know a lot of people have asked about wayfaring, wayfinding signs. And this is, we've got nine positions around the city in the downtown core where we're gonna be putting these signs up. So excited to get those put up and they should be up probably the next few weeks. So we're, you know, should be, we're excited to have those up. Like Park Avenue, Main Street, those areas, you'll, you'll start to see those pop up. So really excited to have those up. Next up, one of my, my kind of pet peeves, it's, you know, we've been trying for, gosh, it's almost, almost a year. It's unbelievable the amount of time it takes, you know, between the DOT permitting and, and finding what we need in the lighting and finding a contractor that was, was available was the up-street lighting in our medians, our big palm trees, which are so beautiful. And yet, you know, at night, you know, to be able to have them lit up like this is kind of what we're, we're excited about. So the two medians right now, which have the palm trees, will have, within the next, within the next month probably, we'll have those up lit. So at night, as you go down the Central and the Park Avenue medians, we'll both have palm trees there that'll be, our palm trees will be lit. So we're really excited to see that happen. And last but not least, with gateway sign on the West Orange Trail pedestrian bridge. Another one of those, DOT never works very fast, so you have to kind of, you know, work with them. We want to have a big Apopka sign up on the pedestrian bridge. So obviously it'll be, it'll be backlit, so it'll be a beautiful sign. It'll be on, on the, on both sides, the east and the west side of that pedestrian bridge. So we're, we're so excited to have that as, as a, as a part of the city. So, you know, between the down, the, the uplighting on the palm trees and the signs and, you know, the resurfacing, the whole downtown core is really gonna start to pop. So we're, we're excited. And then last but not least, and this is into the future, but because of our relationship with DOT, they, they, they came to us and said, hey, you know what we'd like to do is look at the 436 from basically where the 441 merge all the way back to line, which is, which is the Orange County, where you're going to Seminole County. They want to look at, at trying to skinny up these lanes from 11 to 10 feet, which then will give us some opportunities for bike lanes and maybe even something even more exciting. Well, we're still got, looking at what we can do to, to move traffic and also be, be a, not only a better flow as far as safety, but also with some aesthetics with trees and the medians. So really happy to have that with the bike lanes. And landscaping then will be maintained by DOT, which obviously we'll maintain and we'll just build back to DOT. So we'll be able to maintain a beautiful landscape median along 436 from that stretch from, from basically Sheeler all the way back to Line Drive. So really happy to have that, that. that, um, that, uh, now, uh, they'll start planning in 2024 and will be construction hopefully finished by 2026. So just, um, a lot of great things coming on, on our two major, you know, roads through, through Apopka being 441 and 436. And so that's kind of where we're at. And then, um, if you need any technical details, I've got my, my guru here, an expert, Pam Richmond. So anything?
Uh, I just want to say, um, yay. I wish it could happen this year. Um, uh, you know, just that whole project curb appeal. Um, I'm glad that we have some funding now to make sure that the weeds don't grow and that the curbs look good and, and moving forward and again with our program with Nicole getting that up and running. Just all these are going in the right direction. I would like to make one request. The light at 441 and Arrow, when you're turning left into San Miguel's, there's, it doesn't give any left turn. It just immediately you have to wait for the traffic.
Yeah. There was so much, I gave him so much, he just couldn't mention everything. That, that's, uh, that's, we're doing that. So there'll be the matching left turns and the signal will be aligned too. So we're squaring it up. We don't like those offsets.
Very excited about the sign. That's, that's time to class it up.
And also the left turning lane going into the, um, Holiday Inn, you know, what is that? McGee, when you go to make the left before Burger King, that light is always blinking.
You, you get a green and then it's, it's called a, a protective permissive. So what it's telling you, it flashes yellow.
Right.
It's telling you that you can make a left turn, but you, you have to yield right away. So initially you'll get a right green arrow, I mean, a left green arrow. And then after that, then it flashes yellow because the oncoming traffic has a green light. So it's just an added layer of, because people will sit there. If they don't have some kind of arrow, they won't know to make the turn when there's a gap in traffic. So it flashes yellow saying, you can go, but yield.
Oh, okay. I haven't seen it turn green. I've actually sat there through the whole yellow, yellow, yellow. And I've literally have to wait till the traffic stops before, but I haven't done that in a while, been probably a week or two.
Okay. Well, if it doesn't turn green, I'll, I'll look at it. Maybe it doesn't. Maybe it just flashes yellow, but it's telling you that it's a yield, a, it's a permissive left turn.
I've actually just kind of to see if it works, because I keep saying I never see it turn green.
Well, I would tell you when, when Dixie opens, because they're going to have big impacts to that intersection, we're going to have to review the timing anyway. And so we may change how the, the intersection cycles and you'll get, um, uh, opposing left turn lanes with a green and then just change the whole way the intersection cycles.
Okay.
So we'll see. But soon as when Dixie opens.
So this presentation that you are providing, would you be able to kind of send us either a link or a copy of it?
I will, um, send you a copy and a link.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Looks beautiful. I love it. Can't wait to see it.
Mr. Nesta?
Same. Excited.
Well, thank you, Pam. Thanks for all your hard work and, you know, working with DOT to get this, you know, it's a slow process, but we are, we are making progress for sure. Okay, next up, we got Daniel Anderson from Malden and Jenkins LLC. It's our auditor.
Good afternoon, Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director. So we have here our auditor from Malden and Jenkins who's going to do the presentation for the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 21.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As Gladimir mentioned, my name's Daniel Anderson. I'm a director with Malden and Jenkins and I had responsibility for the day-to-day activities of the city's 2021 fiscal year-end audit. You should have two items in your agenda packet. One is the annual comprehensive financial report itself. Uh, and if you're very keen, you'll note that they, we changed a couple of the words in that, which is due to a new accounting standard that came out. The second is a separate document that our firm issues called the Auditor's Discussion and Analysis, and that goes through our required communications with you under the governmental auditing standards. This presentation really highlights that Auditor's Discussion and Analysis, and hopefully it's brief for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at the end of it. First, Malden and Jenkins, we are a large regional audit organization. We just completed our second year performing the city's audit. Our governmental practice is the firm's largest niche, serving approximately 650 governments across the Southeast. And this includes over 150 municipalities as well as over 150 entities which seek and receive the GFOA certificate for excellence in financial reporting annually, both similar to the city. We are considered to be a top 20 firm in conducting single audits, which wasn't an impact this year as we didn't have to perform one. But with all the American Rescue Plan Act funds that you receive, we are anticipating having to perform one in future periods. We do offer 16 hours of free continuing education annually to our clients, and this extends beyond Gladimir and her team and extends to all the commissioners as well. So the next one is actually coming up in a few weeks. So certainly Gladimir should have all the information to register for it. It's a webinar that you can access from wherever you, wherever you choose to be. And then lastly, one thing that we are proud of is a former partner of ours, Joel Black, was appointed as the Chair of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board about two years ago. So it's certainly humbling that the standard-setting body for governmental accounting chose someone from our firm to lead their organization for a seven-year term. We perform an audit, obviously, to express an opinion on the fairness of the presentation of the city's financial statements. At the conclusion of the audit, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance we can render. So in our opinion, the financial statements that you have are free of material misstatements. A couple other reports that we issue in performing the audit, the first one we refer to as the Yellow Book Report, which is our report on our testing of internal controls and compliance with respect to laws, rules, and regulations. This is a negative assurance report, so we don't issue an opinion. We just note something if we've identified it. We do have one finding, uh, that is referenced within this report, and I'll touch on that a little bit more here in a minute. As I mentioned previously, the city did not expend more than $750,000 in federal or state awards in its fiscal year 2021, so a single audit was not required. With respect to the rules of the Auditor General, we are required to issue an independent Auditor's Management Letter over our tests of compliance with those rules of the Auditor General, and no issues are noted within, within that report. And the last report you'll note is what's referred to as an Independent Accountant's Report, which is something that's new within the last several years. And it's a report on our examination of the city's investment in public funds and their compliance with, you know, ensuring that those public funds are invested properly, and we have no issues noted within that report. Some quick highlights, obviously, the general fund is of utmost importance to the city, so this really just shows the breakout of where the revenues were derived from for the 2021 fiscal year-end. As you can see, about half of the revenues were, uh, derived from taxes that were levied. On the expenditure side, this breaks out where the expenditures by function were incurred. So Public Safety has the largest piece of that pie, which is very common with all the governmental entities that we audit. And then you can see where the other functions kind of follow as well. This chart I actually think is really good. Uh, it provides the fund balance history of the general fund over the last five years. And historically, we've just kind of showed the total fund balance. But, uh, at the request of Edward and Gladimir, we actually broke out, you know, by what type of the fund balance it is, uh, you know, whether it be restricted, committed, assigned, or unassigned. And it shows which portion of your overall fund balance of the general fund falls within each of those buckets. I know the coloring's a little bit tricky to follow, but the non-spendable is really the portion that you can't really see very much at all. It's kind of the very bottom bar on that chart. So the largest piece of your general fund fund balance is unassigned fund balance. And, you know, the overall fund balance is approximately between 25 and 30% of the annual expenditures of the general fund, which is exceeding the GFOA's recommendation for where that balance should be. So certainly the general fund's in a very good financial position, uh, and it really provides the, the city opportunities for determining how we'd like to spend that. This next chart shows the trend of the, the governmental activities debt. So this doesn't refer to the utility fund or the sanitation fund. Um, it's just all of your governmental activities and how that's trended over the last five years. As you can see, that the city's debt's being reduced on an annual basis, which is certainly something, uh, that's very good, especially noting, you know, the positive fund balance that you have within the general fund. I, I mentioned the Auditor's Discussion and Analysis has our required communications. I'll briefly go through those verbally as well. Ultimately, management's responsible for the financial statements and its accounting policies. We encountered no difficulties in working with management and performing the audit. Gladimir and her team are tremendous to work with. They always have a great attitude and provide us information whenever we request it. There were audit adjustments that were prepared and provided to management and posted to the city's records, but there were no uncorrected misstatements where we proposed an audit adjustment be made and management elected not to post that. We had no disagreements with management over the application of any accounting policies or procedures. We obtained written representations from management over the information provided to us at the conclusion of the audit. We're not aware of management's consultation with other accountants or what's referred to as opinion shopping. There were no significant issues discussed with management to bring to your attention. And lastly, Malden and Jenkins is independent with respect to the city. I mentioned the finding previously. The audit standards essentially require us to report findings if audit adjustments greater than our materiality lovers, levels were required to be posted. We did have a few audit adjustments that exceeded this level. That being said, we don't think that these are of the nature to where they're going to be recurring on an annual basis. So we really think the city's already resolved the issue that resulted in this audit adjustment and this finding. Uh, so certainly we don't anticipate any audit adjustments going forward. And, you know, I know a few years ago, there were several findings that the city had, and we've kind of reduced it down to one, which, you know, obviously shows that the city and the finance department are working in a tremendous direction. Uh, and as I mentioned, you know, Gladimir and her team are tremendous to work with, uh, and we certainly feel that, you know, we don't anticipate any of these findings to be recurring or to be continuing going forward. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Malden and Jenkins certainly appreciates the opportunity to serve as the city's auditors. And I will answer any questions that you have about the audit process, the presentation, or the financial statements themselves, if you have any.
Any questions?
Oh, you're talking to me? Okay. So this is not my strong point. Usually I go back to Gladys where she kind of breaks this down for me and gives it to me in kind of terms that I can understand. So, um, no, I have no questions.
Yes, uh, thank you for your presentation. We depend on you to pick us apart.
Yeah.
Um, and so we, we want to find the problems, issues, holes, gaps, anything. And so it's, it's tremendous on our staff. Again, I know they've worked very hard to get some things in order. Um, the, uh, again, the audit adjustments of concern, what were they?
So we had an adjustment, uh, again, they're both kind of related to the system and really they're coming forward from last year and how adjustments from the 2020 audit were posted and recorded and how they flowed through in 2021. So the first was in relation to accounts receivable and revenue of premium tax dollars, uh, for the state pension contribution and just making sure that those were reversed properly and then the new adjustments were recorded properly. And then the second one was in relation to just the, the cash balances that the city has and the reconciliations. The bank accounts were reconciled, but the system kind of does some entries in the background, uh, that kind of show where that allocation of those entries go. And essentially, the cash balances that the city provided us were correct. The allocation of it is where kind of the, I think Gladimir was still learning how the system works, uh, to ensure, okay, whenever we post an entry, here's how it kind of flows through the entire system. And that's where we noticed it and said, y-yes, your bank accounts are reconciled properly. However, the entries that were posted to do that did not flow through the system a, as they were designed to, or as they should be designed to.
And as you said, you didn't expect it to continue because obviously it, it then is fixed and...
Certainly. And, you know, a- as I mentioned, we provided audit adjustments to Gladimir at the end, and she actually called me up and said, well, here's another one where if I post it the way that you provide it, then it's not going to flow through the system properly. So I think she's identified and understands, okay, whenever we post an entry, here's how it flows through the system. So, you know, she's posted those in the test feature to make sure, okay, it posted properly before she went ahead and did it in the, the actual live feature. So again, we don't anticipate those occurring again.
So just the measure of it was a trigger to look at and everything was still done correctly. It just needed to be caught up and basically at that point.
Essentially, yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Same. It's cool to see, especially on a graphic, how we're paying down our debt. I think that's very, uh, it, it shows our fiscal responsibility. So very proud of that.
Awesome. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your team.
Absolutely. And lastly, I don't know if any of you are traveling to Fort Lauderdale next week for the city's, but we will be down there, so be sure to stop by and say hello and, you know, we hope to see you there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Edward, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Next up, public comment period. Phyllis, why don't you start us out? And we need your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Phyllis Page, um, 2374 Martin Road, Apopka, Florida 32703. And the purpose of my coming today is about what your first presentation was about. It's about mentoring. And I could hardly contain myself when Natalie was speaking. I taught Natalie in second grade. And I'm so proud of her and the things that she's doing now for the community and wanting to stay in the community. So I put together for you, uh, a packet that is about First Valencia and Apopka High School. I got into this because Valencia came to First Baptist Church, Apopka, five years ago. And they asked us to do a mentoring program. We didn't have anything in place. We did go and do some research in, in Tampa. We came back and said, wow, that's a lot. Within two weeks, Valencia came to us and said, here's your program. We just need people. And our church people stood and said, yes, we can do this. That colorful card is what Valencia gives out. It is a program that is all over Orange County. They just didn't think Apopka had people who would mentor. Shame on them. And because of my years of work at Dream Lake, we had a outstanding mentor program and our people in business supported us. We have good citizens because I believe they mentored 25 years ago. So here's my personal experience. The first paper says, you need, Apopka High School is nine through 12. Students are asked to put an application in at eighth grade. If they are accepted through Valencia's program, they are matched up if there are people who volunteer. To be a mentor for Valencia, you go through a background check. You do a volunteer form for OCPS. You are then completed with Valencia. If you want training, they'll train us. They provide everything that you need. All you need to do is, number one, you have to have one student and you have to meet one, 15 times in a school year for 30 minutes. I did it virtual for two years. All I did was hit my computer and write up a summary. My student graduated in May. I, when I met her four years ago, I was like, she doesn't need me. She's bright. I'm sorry. Ninth and 10th graders do not do a good job of keeping a GPA. They will get back underneath it and they won't graduate because they didn't get what they needed to do the, the grades. And catching up is why we have alternative schools. And so she went to the virtual because of COVID. She ended up being a 3.9. And she was outstanding. But we communicated and my job was to say, what did you do in English? What did you do in science? How are you doing? How's your family? What's your brother and sister doing? And it worked. So there's a simple visual for you because I know how people are. You don't, you've got paper, you've got visuals. And if you do a good job, Valencia will give you two years free. If you have a mentor, you keep your grades, you do your volunteering, and it's a deal. My girl is going and I went to the award for the students from Valencia and we had people going to West Point. So it's worthy of attention. We just have to have people who will give some time. And that's what I'm here to tell you. I think Apopka's better than they think we are. And the other thing that I have for you is the flyer from my church. My church has a ministry... My church has a ministry that is called Next Door. The Next Door is free tutoring to elementary students after school, Tuesdays and Thursdays. All they have to do is come. And I don't, I think it's the best-kept secret, going in Apopka. And we have gone to the schools to tell them, it's free, here, send us students. And they're not doing it. I don't know why. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
There's a little passion there.
Yeah, just a little.
And if anybody wants some of this, I'll put it on the table.
There you go.
Because it's huge, it's huge, and we need it.
Yes. All right.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Yes. All right, Susan, who else we got?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida. I had a subject I was going to cover here today about the fellow that thinks he's the mayor of this town, but I changed my mind during the last meeting. During the last meeting, Commissioner Nesta said something about the commercial laundry they built out there, and Mayor Nelson talked about how all the previous fire chiefs, all good men, some great men, I learned under several of them, had thought the commercial laundry was okay because it had a commercial smoke evacuation system and a commercial fire suppression system, had sprinklers and exhaust fans. I'm willing to bet you that none of them have ever fought a fire in a commercial laundry. It is an animal all its own. I have 35 years in the fire service, 12 years teaching at the Fire Academy, and I have fought two commercial laundry fires. Very small fires in the normal thing of thinking, confined to one machine. The problem is the engineered smoke evacuation system designed by the same college engineers that designed, say, the water drainage from Sheiler Oaks or the twin towers to stand up to jet airplanes. They designed the smoke evacuation. So if you have a fire and a piece of equipment over there, and the smoke evacuation fan is over here, when the smoke detector set off the fan, it starts sucking out the smoke and the heat through the fan. So the first place that the heat gets to the point where it'll fuse or open the sprinkler head is by the fan, not by the burning piece of equipment. The water from the sprinkler system cools the smoke in the building, which removes the buoyancy. Everybody knows smoke goes up, right? Cold smoke doesn't go up. Cold smoke fills the building, and 90% of the time, smoke is what kills people, especially firefighters. Look up the Charleston Nine and find out about nine firefighters that died in a smoke-filled environment because they couldn't get out. Now, the two I worked, the first one, 30 personnel on the scene. It took us two hours to locate the seat of the fire with state-of-the-art equipment, because when you go into a commercial laundry, every piece of equipment that's in there operating is hot. So when you look at it with your flare camera, all you see is the heat signature. What you can't see is your hand in front of your face because the cold smoke has banked down and filled the room. They're time-consuming, they're staffing-consuming, and they're dangerous. We endanger every person on this fire department the longer we go without proper staffing. Now, the other thing I'd like to say is, Mayor Nelson, you're right, all those firefighters, fire chiefs thought it was a good idea because it had those two-designed systems. I want to remind you, all of those fire chiefs taught that poorly-designed top-heavy trailer that tipped over and crushed a firefighter a couple of weeks ago was a good thing, too. So how long are we going to let a good thing go on before we endanger our firefighters further than what they are? You don't have enough personnel on a single shift to handle a small fire in one commercial dryer or folding machine in that building out there without calling mutual aid from Orange County. Won't happen, because if it does, you're endangering all those people. State law requires you have four personnel on the scene before you even make entry, which means your squad doesn't need to be tied up, and you get an engine and a rescue there, or the engine and the squad at the same time to even begin the search. Closing, I want to say that no citizens of this town have yet been told if their water is coming through asbestos and concrete pipes or galvanized pipes, nor have anything other than the grass being mowed at any of the facilities I pointed out to you in poor disrepair a month ago has been done. I see you in my four minutes. I'll see you in a week.
Thank you.
Next up, Susan?
Sylvester Hall. Good afternoon, Area 1, Sylvester Hall, 391 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. I'm here to share some concerns about the administration and the leadership that I see. And keep in mind, this is my vision. Everybody have their own vision. For the most part, I've been sitting by and just taking everything in, evaluating everything. Mayor, I just watched Mr. New leave, and you smiling when he's telling you the issues that we have with the fire department. And we just lost a member of the fire department. That disturbs me. So I'm looking, and I'm saying, okay, are you taking this seriously? So my concern is just what Mr. New just echoed. When you look at the fire department, and one of the things that I want to share with you, what I call is loyalty hiring and loyalty staffing. That means you staff with people that's going to share your view and people that's going to look the other way. And that is very dangerous for an organization and is very dangerous for a city. I want to move quickly to the, because I see my time running out, the fire department. I watched the video of the young man intoxicated. But for the grace of God, that could have been another funeral we may be going to. He ran over somebody, he got a call, went to a call, and God knows what would have happened then. But my point is, listening to the video, the young man is 25 years old. And if my memory serves me correctly, he'd been on the force for five years. So, man, this young man came to the force as a baby. And in five years, this is where he's at. So I'm looking at the leadership and the guidance that have nurtured this young police officer to this point in his life, 25 years old. Now, as a leader, supervisor, manager, I'm looking at that, if he's in a patrol car and he's coming to work and he's that intoxicated, we got a problem. There's a much bigger issue, because this is probably not the first time. So if he come, everybody else on the staff know that he's intoxicated, what is being done about it? So that tells me there's a culture there that needs to be addressed. And it needs to be addressed before we have another funeral. So what I would like is some type of plan of action from your administration, telling the people like Mr. New and others, what are we doing to rectify this before we have another incident where we lose, somebody loses a loved one? Now, if I was counseling some of the families, I would tell them, go get the best lawyer they can get, because if that was my son, this is what I would do. I would go get the best lawyer I can get, the best lawyer that money can buy, and I wouldn't do it with nobody local here. We have to clean up our act. And the people that you surround yourself with, the people that are giving you advice, those have to be people that you're willing to hear the truth from. Not what you want to hear, or they're afraid to tell you what you want to hear. They need to tell you the truth so that we can move forward in a positive direction and a safe direction for the city of Apopka. Thank you.
Rod Olson, 70, I can't remember my address now. 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. Mayor, commissioners, three things I want to touch base on today. First of all, the efforts of the fire department and the police department, the entire city, the Citizens Police Academy in pulling off the unbelievable event honoring Austin Duran. It was heartwarming, heartfelt, and a great honor to the young man that we unfortunately lost. As a follow to that, we have a run memorial, 9/11 memorial run coming up on September 10th this year, the second annual. I have created a Team Austin Duran. Anyone that wants to sign up or run under it, there is a password. Capital A for Austin, capital D for Duran, lowercase a, lowercase f, lowercase d for Apopka Fire Department, 71522. And following that, it's my hope and prayers that we will never have to have another event like that for the city of Apopka. I also want to flag you, my third item today is that we have a candidate forum that'll be taking place tomorrow at Victory Church, 7:00 PM for Commissioner Banks and Seat, for Lynetta Johnson and Kyle Becker. Anyway, so I encourage you all to tune in with that. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you. That it? Okay. Awesome. All right. Got consent agenda, we got seven items. Does anybody need to pull any of the seven items? If not, look for a motion to approve. Seven items as presented?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, 451 Commerce Park. Jean.
Sorry, just got to get to the consent agenda.
Good afternoon. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the 451 Commerce Park major development plan. The property is located on the southeast corner of Marshall Lake Road and State Road 451. Aerial shows our project is surrounded by industrial centers. The 451 Commerce Park major development plan proposes the development of an industrial center for warehouse, storage, office, as well as vehicle and trailer parking on approximately 22 acres. Building A comprises of over 129,000 square feet of warehouse storage area and over 14,000 square feet of office area. Building B consists of approximately 102,000 square feet of warehouse storage area and 14,000 square feet of office area. While the required parking is 68 spaces, the applicant is proposing 77 parking spaces with eight accessible spaces. The proposed high is 44 feet. Project will have two full-access connections to Marshall Lake Road. The city and the developer are negotiating a transportation impact fee credit agreement that will require the developer to make substantial improvements to the condition of Marshall Lake Road from the project's western property line on Marshall Lake Road east to the point approximately 200 feet west of Bradshaw Road where Marshall Lake has already been improved. The DRC recommends approval, and at its meeting on July 12, 2022, Planning Commission recommended approval of the major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the 451 Commerce Park major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean on this issue? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the major development plan for 451 Commerce Park.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Kelly Park Land Investments. Jean?
I'm so sorry. This is my agenda item.
What's that?
This is my, um, this is not...
Yeah. No, we're at item number two.
Yeah.
You're next. You're third. Come on, Jean. Get with the program.
I'm so sorry. I have like a thousand projects.
I was like, are you overworked?
But I know what this is. Good news. Okay, I'm sorry. For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Kelly Park property major development plan. The property is located south of Anditch Road and east of Round Lake Road within the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. The site is approximately 205 acres. The Kelly Park property, also known as the Crossroad at Kelly Park, major development plan proposes the development of 670 single-family detached residences on 205.07 acres. The residential units will be a mix of 498 lots with a minimum width of 52 feet and 153 lots with a minimum width of 40 feet. Lots with 40 feet in width will be rear-loaded. The applicant proposes a minimum living area of 1,200 square feet. There are no minimum or maximum lot width or living area requirements for developments within the KPI Form-Based Code. The KPI Form-Based Code requires that developments within the neighborhood overlay to dedicate a minimum of 20% of land area for open space and 15% of land area for open space in the transitional overlay. The applicant is proposing 40.8 acres of open space for this project, where 39.8 acres are required. The open space and recreation spaces include two pools with restroom facilities and a trail system meandering through the development. In addition, a 25-foot buffer is proposed at the northern end of the development along Anditch Road. Pursuant to Section R of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code, which has recently been amended, the applicant is proposing to provide Track P16 as being open to the public and privately owned and maintained. Access to the site is on Kelly Park Road and Anditch Road with proposed connections to the western and eastern adjacent parcels. In the preceding item, Pam Richland will go over the amended DA for this project and will go over the improvements as well. At this time, the DRC recommends approval, and at its meeting on July 12, 2022, Planning Commission recommended approval of the major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Kelly Park property major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Velasquez?
No, I have no questions at this time.
Yeah, I've got some tapping of the brakes on the transportation. Couple of things here. It says, page 78, project distribution in the analysis assumes access to the site will be available from Kelly Park Road and Anditch Road with 5% of the project traffic entering, I'm sorry, I've got my notes in the way here, basically from Anditch Road, and 95% of traffic entering and exiting from Kelly Park Road. But when you look at it, the exit down to Kelly Park, there's quite a drive. The problem is that it's based upon that, the assumption that 95% are going to head south. And when I look at the distribution, where the homes are to where that is, is that solid? Because that affects what's going to be happening on those roads. And I mean, if I was that close, Anditch would be something that I would aim toward.
You might. They ran the travel demand model, and, and yes, maybe 95%, maybe 90%, but there are other things that are going on, which I was going to address when I did my agenda item. There are four large developments in this area, and we are collectively working out a roadway grid, if you will, that we're all going to work on together. So in addition to that one driveway that you see, there's going to be a connection to Effie Drive. There are going to be, and there's going to be a connection to the, is this one? There's going to be connections from this development to this development here, too. So, it's more than that one driveway. This is just the initial phase. And because of the condition of Anditch Road and other dynamics out there, I actually agree that most of the traffic will come to the south. So we're focusing our... So we're focusing our attention, also they're going to put a signal on their southern entrance. So they have other development that'll be coming in. They're going to kind of fill in this area. There's this large development here, large development here. This is the hospital property and we've been told that they have escalated their schedule by a couple of years. So.
And for everybody else, page one oh six is more of a direct picture of that. And that's where, again, the distance, even if this is all filled in, the distance, if I live up here to go down there, unless, we're assuming everybody here is going to do business in Apopka versus going and catching the interstate going around, I don't know, just for me, so you're basically telling me that more in-depth study still gives you pretty sound security.
I'm telling you, for people going maybe to Orlando, there's more traffic going south. So that would involve getting on the four twenty-nine. And it's a more direct route to come south through that site to get on the four twenty-nine than to go north, to go to Anditch, to come down Plymouth Sorrento and then back over or to go down Round Lake and then come back Kelly Park Road. Most things that come south, a lot of it will come down Plymouth Sorrento, which is another reason that people tend to take the most direct route instead of going out of their way. And when you factor in that we're going to be widening Kelly Park Road before this project and the others build out, I still, in my experience, I think that the traffic is, most of it's going to be coming south. That doesn't mean that in five years, we won't collectively say, other things are going on up there and we'll work with Orange County to investigate Anditch Road. But for now, our plans are to focus this way.
Okay. And I noticed there, again, it says back on page seventy-six for everybody here, this analysis included existing project encumbered traffic and other projects impacting these roadway segments. And it wasn't acceptable level of service, but next paragraph, the intersection of Kelly Park Road with both the north and southbound State Road four twenty-nine ramps fail with the addition of project traffic. The eastbound approach of the Kelly Park Road Plymouth Sorrento Road intersection will also fail with the additional of project traffic. All other study intersections will continue to operate at an acceptable level of service. So you entered into a mitigation agreement.
We're working on that.
Okay. So my second question then is, it looks like the mitigation, let me see what page, page one sixty-eight. Pull it up here. So it says, developers shall provide city with a working draft of the road agreement within sixty days after the effective date, the agreement hearing of the parties to negotiate in good faith to agree upon the form of the road agreement prior to construction site plan rather than major development plan approval. So basically, we have to approve this even without knowing what they're willing to do to fix what will be failures if they don't fix it. What, and I know you're still in negotiation of that, so I just want to make sure, the bottom line is that we know this is going to create issues in traffic as developments grow. We want to make sure that they're addressing that. What's our surety for that?
In their existing agreement, they have to fix their connection to Kelly Park Road. They have to fix Round Lake and Kelly Park. Those are the urgent needs to let the first phase of their project go forward without any catastrophic degradation of the roadway network.
So there is that agreement in place?
That is already in place. That is not changing.
Okay. So any further negotiation on that is semantics or?
No. Before they can move forward with anything else, we're bringing these other three big players in because we have to figure out how to collectively put our money together to get Kelly Park widened, get a signal at Golden Gem, get a signal at Effie. I'm already working with the Expressway to get those signals installed at the ramps. But we need to get Kelly Park Road widened from Plymouth Sorrento to just, to the western, just past the western boundary of this development. Our study showed that we don't need to widen any further because it's way outside the KPI. And then we have other roadway improvements in the area. If it's ever determined that we're going to connect Effie Road to the north, that's when we'll start talking about Anditch. Most of Anditch is outside of the KPI, so I don't really expect to see a lot of development up there. But it doesn't mean that we won't have to make some safety improvements at some time in the future. Widening it, I don't know, we're creating other parallel facilities that would make widening Anditch not make sense.
Okay. Yeah, again, just the fact that we're assuming traffic is going to go a certain way, that was the one that really caused me, because if they don't, then what is now already indicating that it will fail will be a bigger failure. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're just are looking ahead and, again, that we do have the agreement in place before we go, give a go-ahead that then we don't have any negotiating power, so.
This is, this whole area down here, it's supposed to be more commercial, that's like the big commercial area. And the way, you know, gravity model works for transportation is people move in the direction of employment and retail. So everything is down this way. There's, there's just not much north and it's, if they build their road.
Unless they're going to connect to, you know, get the back road up to.
There's going to be plenty of ways for them to, you know, if you're, if you live up here, you'll be able to come across and go down Effie.
But what about straight east over and connect to heading north?
To go north?
Yeah.
From?
Let's say someone wants to move here because they want to get around and work in Lake Mary and that area. I just want to make sure that that's our models fit that.
One thing that you would get on the toll road for that, which would mean you'd have to go south or you'd have to go west.
Okay.
So it's, it's not a crystal ball. It's our best forecasting that we can do and we spend a lot of time.
As long as you're pretty confident in that. When I see assuming, that just makes me, we'll tap the brakes.
I understand. I could just have used the word guess. I'm guessing, but.
But it's sound, educated guess is what you're telling me.
Yeah. I consulted a lot of, I asked the same question you did when I first saw the traffic study. And we had a lot of conversations about it. Is ninety-five percent a little high, maybe, give or take five percent or so? But there's really no reason for people to go, a lot of people to go north. There's nothing up there and there's probably not going to be, you know, I can't see, I can't even see twenty years out, but I would say that it's, it's pretty far off.
Okay.
And that's Orange County's road. They know about this and they were not concerned. So I take some comfort in that, too.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
I have two questions. I noticed there are five stub outs in this project. I'm not sure who owns the surrounding land to this project, but are they aware that there's a possibility that those streets is going to enter into their property once it's developed?
At the rezoning level for this project, they were required to inform adjacent property owners within three hundred feet of the property of the rezoning intent and also pre-application community meeting, which was held.
All right. And so, so I'm going to assume then whoever the homeowners, it's going to be at the end of those stub outs, will realize that there's a possibility that there would be traffic that would be coming from the adjoining properties once that's developed.
The stub outs are planned for future access, so what we have now within the KPI is that we have to plan for future connections, whichever that property is, is developing as they develop. And then there will be no access to the adjoining property now if it's, if it's privately owned. So if it's a single-family residence, there's no connection to their home. This is a future connection.
For the, for the stub outs that are there?
Yes.
Any stub out for the last three years that are being planned, the requirement is to put a sign up there for future roadway connection. That way, any resident that's near that or if they're adjacent to it, they know that that is a possibility that it could be a roadway going through. That happened from a previous development that was done about five, six years ago that we, nobody knew what was going on at the end of the cul-de-sac and all of a sudden we're connecting it to the property next door. So we corrected that by putting that as one of the requirements for this stuff.
All right. And then my second, I guess, comment, not necessarily a question, is that I noticed the school board said that there is no capacity for this development. And I just want to make sure that somebody's keeping numbers so that we can continue to put pressure on the school board that we need another school in this area.
The school board is keeping numbers, yeah. But the capacity for the school for this under the rezoning, they were already entitled to it. This was part of the previous Kelly Park DRI. So they were entitled several years ago when the DRI was created. But as far as concurrency, which is real time numbers, no, there's no capacity for the concurrency. And the, the school board has a spreadsheet particularly for the DRI that was entitled. So they know what's going on.
All right. And if I can jump back in there, because I did have that marked, too. And I was just thinking on that, and this may be just more something we have to discuss in staff, but, you know, we've constantly said, who can be the one to say, where do we draw the line? Because we don't want to be constantly in this situation. Is there not something that we consider to where there's a limitation on the rest of that build-out if there's not school capacity? Is that something that we're bound to, that we can okay the project but limit if the school is not there, that our kids aren't, you know, being hurried into the boxes?
Well, this gets into the same situation that we are always in, is that Florida legislation has dictated that they cannot build a school until it's way over capacity. So in any case, I mean, practically all the schools are over capacity right now, which means that, I mean, you, you could say, no more building.
But what I'm saying is, we approve this based upon that overcapacity, but we also have the phase of the build-out until they get on the stick and actually build us that school, knowing that it's overcapacity, to where the development then does not overdevelop to the point where our kids are paying the price. That's, you know, maybe if we had somebody up in Tallahassee to do something like that.
Well, and I'm trying to get the school board to just come out and kind of explain it. And I tell you, they, they have not been forthcoming with.
Coming out.
Yeah, yeah, they haven't come out. And so I'm, you know, they said they want a workshop. Well, I want it to be a presentation and so come on out, let's, let's talk about it. And so I'm, I'm still waiting.
We get the frustration, but it's based upon the state-level requirement.
Correct.
That it's overbuilt before we get started.
Yes, but that's, that's the main part.
We're the ones that have to deal with it in the real world here, so.
Now, because this, again, like Gina mentioned, because this was part of the DRI, they were vested eight hundred and some odd units for the, for the DRI itself for this area. So they, that's how they were able to get that vesting. Any other developments that are coming in that might not have vesting because it's outside of the DRI itself, they are, they're doing the capacity agreement or the capacity determination and then they still have the concurrency agreement. As I mentioned in a couple of different meetings, some of those concurrency agreements are a million dollars. And they typically make a, like a three payment or four payment system into it as they pull permits. So they're paying into that system. And like you mentioned, Mayor, I think it was a meeting or two ago, the, the Orange County School Board has millions and millions of dollars waiting to do those schools as soon as they get that capacity, that overcapacity limitation in order to build a new school. That's why the, the school at Jason Dwelly got built pretty much as fast as it did. That one, you know, it was about a year and a half worth of planning and building, once they, once they got that determination from the legislation. So they, they, they popped that one up. I don't know how soon we're going to be able to get any other schools, but that, that might be one of those questions that can be answered by the school, a school board representative coming in to actually talk with us.
And, and we know from past them trying to explain to us, that's what creates the ability to get the funding to build those schools. So it's, we're constantly seemingly just behind, but again, we're dealing with the real world side of it. I'm just trying to find a way that we can stop that issue, so.
Yeah, it would end up coming up to a limitation on what number are we looking at? Do we stop building at that stage? That's, that is, that is a tough call.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you good? Okay. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Come on down, Rod Olson.
No, this is his specialty.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka. And yes, I'm going to beat this horse to death. And thank you both Commissioners, Commissioner Banksen and Smith for bringing up the issue as well. We are going to open Apopka High School at four thousand students, eight hundred over capacity, eight hundred over capacity. Meanwhile, we're opening Wakava High School again at six hundred and fifty under. We need to look at the entire system. If you always do what you always done, you always get what you always got. We've accepted this kind of, pardon my French, crap, and we must take a more affirmative action. I'm going to be meeting with Teresa Jacobs. I think we need a concerted effort of the citizens. We need the city council. We need the county commissioners and the mayor of Orange County to address this issue. The fact that we are enjoying twenty percent of our students in portables compared to other, we're the fourth largest school district. Miami Dade is less than three percent, Hillsborough less than three percent, Brevard at fifteen percent. We are at almost twenty-one percent overcapacity. It was through three of the four commissioners and the mayor addressing Orange County Public Schools is the only reason Kelly Park is opening this fall. If not, it was the first school was going to be in twenty twenty-six. We have to have an affirmative and concerted effort among you, the county, Orange County Public Schools and the citizens to drive this message home to Tallahassee. The fact that we're a rapidly growing area and we're paying the penalty for this type of thing is unforgivable. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for motion to approve the major development plan for Kelly Park property?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, First Amendment to the Developers Agreement for the Kelly Park Road Development. Pam.
So we sort of touched on this a minute ago, because the other developments coming in in the area, and there are, there are three other large developments, what I want to do is extend their timeline to fully, to fulfill what's in the existing agreement about having the, the full transportation impact fee credit agreement so that we can work in concert with these other three developers. We've already had one meeting. We need a collective vision about putting a hierarchy on what projects are the most important, because we need everybody's impact fee money to fix the road. So, you know, our priorities are Kelly Park Road, the signals on Kelly Park Road, Sadler Road, Effie Road and Golden Gem, and not necessarily in that order. I will tell you that Kelly Park Road is the top priority as well as the, the signals there. It's, when this development comes in, the, the whole look of Kelly Park Road is going to be different. It's going to be a four-lane divided, more of a boulevard, lower speed, and so that's why the signals will work. But, you know, if you're, the development on the south side of Kelly Park Road, you may want to use your impact fee money to build Effie and Sadler. Well, for the whole group, that might not be the top priority. So we have to figure out how to channel our money. So these folks have agreed to move their date out to site plan before we come back with, with the final agreement so that we have time to work together as a group.
Yeah. Yeah, what Pam's done, we've tried to bring in all the major players in that, in that Kelly Park interchange and say, okay, let's, let's all look at not from your property, but the properties around you, what, you know, who's coming first? Because that also matters. Okay, so this road improvement, maybe we don't need if they're not willing to, if they're not going to start building in two thousand twenty-three. So what we're trying to do is manage not only the, the road network, but how, when we build them based on when they're projected, you know, building. And obviously, commercial has a different, you know, impact on roads than does residential. So all those things kind of come into play, but we've, we had a meeting with four or five of them.
Last week.
Was it last week? Time flies.
Last week?
Two weeks. Two weeks ago, yeah. Okay. And, and so we're trying to put everybody on the same page so that we, as we, as we look at these road improvements, that we're, we're, we're doing it based on who's coming first. first and then based, and then all, obviously based on what the, what our ultimate goal will look like. And so it's, it's a, you know, somewhat of a challenge, but we're, we're trying to put another meeting together where we've got even a bigger, a bigger circle of, of the major developers to come in and say, okay, now let's, let's prioritize which roads need to be, where we take the impact fees to, to improve them. So, and it takes time, you know, as, as we, we talk about, you know, we're just, we're opening up the signal at Jason Dwelly, and we've been at that for 18 months. You know, just as soon as we heard from the school board that they were, you know, the new school was going in, we started to plan because, heck, we've got, the mast arms were almost, almost a year in, you know, backordered and so everything, and we're just, just now completing it. So, you know, we're, we're trying to think as far over the horizon as we can, but, but understand, you know, when you go back to, you know, oh, oh, four and oh, five, you know, things were just going gangbusters and all of a sudden, you know, recession hits and, you know, here we are 15 years later, you know, with the same where we, you know, where we were, you know, 15 years ago. So it's a, it's, you know, trying to keep everybody, manage our expectations and, and make the road improvements as needed based on what's, what's coming first or next or after that, so.
I don't want to get stuck in the middle of building Kelly Park Road and all of a sudden the economic conditions change and we've got part of a road build, no money to move forward, and not the right pieces under construction. You know, there has to be a logical order to do things, and everybody's trying to buy into that. You know, the first thing we do might not be the best thing for them, but ultimately it will be. So, and it's not stopping them from going forward, really. It's, we just have to be, we have to be responsible with the money that we're receiving.
Any other questions for Pam? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close, close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Kelly Park Road improvements.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Richard Arp, our favorite subject, cemeteries.
Today, I'd like to describe the proposed improvements at the cemetery and recommended, recommend both allocations and reallocation of coronavirus relief funds to cover the cost of the... So this is the most exciting slide. The rest of them are just about funding primarily. So the cemetery is located east of Kitle Nelson Park, east of Edwards Field, and east of the Dog Park. Of course, it's east of Highlands Avenue, west of McGee Avenue, north of Monroe Avenue, and kind of southeast of Oak Street. The red lines on the exhibit are the existing paved roadways in the cemetery. So those roadways will be milled and resurfaced, and, and some of those roadways, of course, have potholes and, and the shoulders are, are not relatively flush with the surrounding grade, so that'll be addressed with the milling and resurfacing. The orange dashed lines, you'll see two areas of orange dashed lines, kind of in the upper right-hand corner, and, and that's, that's a kind of a, I think it's maybe 20 years ago, 30 years ago, somebody put some asphalt down. It looks primarily like, you know, rocks in that area, so that a new roadway in that little loop area would be constructed. And then the, there's a new area of the cemetery that's yet undeveloped. In the bottom right-hand corner, there's another orange loop, so that will be a brand-new roadway there that will serve the, that part of the cemetery. And that is right at the intersection of McGee Avenue and Monroe. The purple line is, it would be a fence around that, that new cemetery area. And kind of in the middle of the exhibit, there's kind of a maroon circle. That's where the Veterans Memorial Monument is right now, and that's a dirt parking lot. So when, when the crew is in there doing the orange roads with the paving, they're going to pave that parking lot and also pave a, a little extension of the parking lot down sort of a path towards the, the Veterans Memorial that would allow people in accessible wheelchairs to park in the parking lot and then be wheeled up to an area where they could see presentations or ceremonies at the memorial itself. And then kind of northeast of where that Veterans parking area is, is the, the area where the new columbarium will be constructed. There's a little gazebo over in that area right now and kind of a wooded area. So that's the, the plan for the general location of that columbarium.
Where did you say that was?
It's sort of northeast of that maroon circle, very close to the Veterans parking lot.
Gazebo is, it'd be just east of that gazebo.
Okay, so funding. So the recommended funding summary for the cemetery paving is that the, we recommend using coronavirus relief funds that are left over from the Yawther's Road paving project. It's $216,000. We recommend using coronavirus relief funds that are left over from a vehicle exhaust improvement project that we had on city vehicles. Those are leftover funds. And then we recommend a new allocation of coronavirus relief funds for the cemetery paving, $237,000, almost $7,000 for a total of $468,000. And the $468,000, it does include a 10% contingency, because paving those roads in the cemetery is, is going to be tricky. They have to use small equipment and, you know, they make sure they don't go off of the road area. Okay, some more recommendations at the cemetery are the allocation of new coronavirus relief funds for the cemetery fence we showed before in purple, and the new allocation of coronavirus relief funds for the new columbarium. Those, I'm sorry, the slide says $50,000. The columbarium, actually, the, the, well, I guess that's the second discrepancy. So the columbarium, the funds that we're asking for in the actual request is $100,000. Also, on the staff report, in the summary section, it says $50,000, but then in the bottom, it says $100,000 for the columbarium. So I apologize for those discrepancies. We are asking for $100,000 for the columbarium to do the columbarium itself, and then also some landscaping areas around and some, you know, walking surfaces, probably benches right near the columbarium. So in total, with the paving at 600, $468,000, there's another $50,000 there, the...
Our packet is corrected.
Oh, it is? Okay, very good. So that's a total of $618,000 for all of the recommended cemetery improvements. So, it's a little long, but direction from city council would be to reallocate $216,239.05 of coronavirus relief funds to cemetery paving that was originally allocated to the Yawther's Road Improvement Project, reallocate $15,137.75 of coronavirus relief funds for cemetery paving that was originally allocated to vehicle exhaust improvements, new allocation of coronavirus relief funds for cemetery paving of $236,969.67, and new allocation of coronavirus relief funds for the new cemetery fence of $50,000, and the new allocation of coronavirus relief funds for the new columbarium of $100,000. And of course, when, when finance brings the actual allocation of the money, they, they do that with round numbers, so they won't be to the cents when you see it from finance. But that is our recommendation.
Any questions for Richard?
For our dedicated audience who keeps hearing coronavirus relief funds, can you just kind of explain what that is and why we're spending it on, on this and not allocating it to anything else?
So those funds are American Rescue Funds that we received. If you recall, we received about $7 million total. So, and the direction that we got from the Treasury was we could use them for any general government improvement. So this is one of those areas where we've elected to use some of those dollars.
Okay. Thank you. It's just for the audience that does tune in and they keep hearing coronavirus relief funds. I just want them to understand why it, it is being used here.
And to that, Diane, as well, Commissioner, we will be bringing a reconciliation of all of those funds to you real soon.
Okay, thank you.
Because my question, how, how much of that money is left?
I think we're sitting around, Commissioner, I don't know. I will get that information to you. We're keeping track of that after, based on these adjustments, we will bring you a reconciliation of that real soon. It won't be long.
All right, and when we say reallocating funds from Yoder Road, so is that left over funding?
Yes.
And Yoder Road has already been completed?
It's completed, Diane, this is what's left.
Okay, and then my other question is that at one of the workshops, when we was talking about these coronavirus funds, I asked for funding for several projects. Is there going to be funding left to fund those?
Um, yes, there are some of those projects that you asked for, we have funded.
All right.
So.
On that note, Richard, I just want to say thank you, because the, the cemetery is long overdue for an upgrade and renovation and, um, obviously expanding it is showing that there is a demand for our residents who want to be, use it as their resting place. And we have all been in that cemetery, and I, I spent one Sunday, probably about four hours walking the entire cemetery, um, and, and realizing that we're going to have all these improvements. I think it'll be very good for a lot of the, you know, family members who do visit their, their loved ones there. So, thank you.
And along those lines, Commissioner and Mayor, I think that's good use of those dollars, because those dollars are one-time dollars that we're going to receive. So we have some improvement strategies that we weren't able to do. This allows us to make those capital improvements. And I think it's good use of the money to do capital improvements with those dollars because they're one-time, we're only going to get them once, so.
Right. And I did want to just bring up, at the same point, you know, I think Rogers brought it up, some of our sidewalk needs, and I did go out and look at some of those. And again, the, the gentleman that, you know, rides his electric vehicle up in the street there, so I'd like us to really think about that and just in this general picture, and I don't know, we need to go here to get that, but I, I think there's some real safety needs in, in that area, and Lake would be a real good focus.
We have those, we're looking at those too, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Nesta, good? Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the allocation of American Rescue Funds for the cemetery columbarium, paving, and fence improvement project.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2948.
Ordinance number 2948. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the boundaries of the bridge at Apopka Community Development District, establishing, established pursuant to ordinance number 2859, providing a severability clause, addressing conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Michael?
No changes.
No changes. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve or adopt ordinance number 2948.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2950.
Ordinance number 2950. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed-Use Zoning District and Neighborhood Overlay District, for certain real property located north of Kelly Park Road, east of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and west of Foliage Way, comprising 39.47 acres more or less, and owned by Nam, Ki-Yon, Lee-Jong-Dan-Nam, Lee-Li-Cun, Lee-Ming-Jia, Robert-Jay, and Elena-Te Hunter, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean?
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2950 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on August 17, 2022, or soon thereafter. The subject properties are within the one-mile radius of the interchange of Wakava Parkway and Kelly Park Road. The site is located north of Kelly Park, Kelly Park Road, east of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and west of Foliage Way, approximately 29, 39 acres in size. The properties have a future land use designation of mixed use, and these properties are permitted a maximum density of one dwelling unit per, a minimum of one dwelling unit per acre and maximum density of five dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from Transitional to KPI MU with a neighborhood overlay. The proposed KPI MU zoning is compatible with the intent of the city's KPI Form-Based The applicant is also requesting approval of the company Master Plan Major Development Plan. The Oaks at Kelly Park Phase III Master Plan Major Development Plan proposes the development of 79 rear-loaded townhome units and 63 front-loaded single-family detached units. The rear-loaded units will have a minimum lot width of 34 feet and a minimum living area of 1,600 square feet and up to two stories. The front-loaded units will also have 1,600 square feet of living area and 55 feet of lot width. There are no minimum and maximum living area or lot size requirements in the KPI Form-Based Code. This subdivision is a continuation of the existing Oaks at Kelly Park Phases I and II. Access to this project site is provided on Kelly Park Road via the existing access for Phase I and II, and two other access points in the central and northern portions of the project area. The applicant is also proposing a total of 14.5 acres of open space area while 13.9 is required. Proposed amenities comprise of a pool and cabana, a totlott area, and pockets of passive green space shared with Phases I and II. The stormwater system will be served by the existing tract F located within Phase I and II on the eastern portion. The DRC recommends approval, and at its meeting on July 12, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning, master plan, and major development plan. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2950 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on August 17, or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean on this one?
Well, they, they have that school, the same thing with the school capacity. The only thing was, it says the determination expires July 25, 2021. So what happens after that? I just thought that was interesting.
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Jeff Summitt with Summit Engineering. Real quick, one clarification regards to staff report. We did have in Phase IV previously, we did have townhomes, but it's been changed. It's actually single-family rear-loaded detached lots, so I just want to clarify that from the staff report. In regards to the schools, we are currently working on our CMA agreement with the schools. So that application has been submitted. We do have an updated determination in regards to capacity. Obviously, we do fail, like everyone else does, but we're currently working on the CMA with, with OCPS, and that should be issued shortly.
Okay, so when it's issued, will it be brought back to us to let us know?
What, the CMA?
Yeah.
No, because what the CMA agreement is, is concurrency. So we can't, your staff can't approve our plat, we can't physically get building permits until we have that agreement in place.
Okay.
So that's, that's your stopgap from that perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, as far as the future access points, those the two on the west side, on the bottom half of the development, I'm seeing those. It's, you're not talking the, the Downman, the...
Yeah, we, when we did the land use, Commissioner, yeah, we, it was very clear that the Downman needed to go bye-bye, so it did. We don't have a connection to Downman. We actually have an open space tract with a lot of landscaping. We did hold two community meetings for this one. We held one for Phase III. We held another one for Phase IV. We took the residents' requests in regards to the landscaping requirements that they wanted to see, as well as the street lighting requirements that they wanted, and incorporated those into the landscape plan.
Okay. So the access is, is the two on the...
Yeah, we, we, we are, we are going to have a new access to Kelly Park Road on this plan, so up in Phase IV, so that would be, that's our southwest corner. We will have turn lanes at the, at that new access point. We've gone through that, worked through that with Pam, and then we do have the two access points, actually, three access points into Phase I and Phase II. And those were actually stubbed out when, when we did the first two phases.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Sure.
Rogers Beck at 7 West Main Street. Just looking at the plan as a whole, I know you mentioned that it was open space set aside, but is there anything for recreation on this plan? Is it just pretty much...
It doesn't seem like there's anything for recreation space.
So as this is a Phase III and IV, so we did do a clubhouse and pool in Phase I and II, so this is all going to be part of the same HOA, so that clubhouse and that pool that were built in Phase I and II will also serve this community. In addition to that, we do have some open spaces. We have, it's kind of hard to see on the, I'm going to screw this thing up because I never get it right. Hey, I did it. So we do have some open space areas here and some open space areas here where we set some passive trails and some benches around for the community. It's kind of like a quasi-dog park without calling it a dog park, if you will, but that was how we addressed the open space concerns in regards to Phase III and Phase IV. And then the active component, we did want to concentrate the active component where we already had created it in Phase I and II.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka. I'm not going to beat all those numbers again, but again, if we always do, we always done, we always get what we always got. The fact that we are a rapidly growing area within the county, that we're absorbing more than our share of the overcapacity, has got to stop. Thank you.
I think what you need to add is that we're also giving them impact V dollars that we're not getting back. That's the, so, okay.
With that, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2950. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. And we've got to hold this over for a second reading and adoption, but this is the first reading. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, a second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-32.
Resolution 2022-2032. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive franchise agreement for commercial solid waste services with RGH Waste and Disposal LLC for roll-off container collection and disposal of waste within the city, providing for an effective date.
Mayor Commissioners, Josh Robinson, Public Works. Any questions on the resolution? Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve resolution 2022-32.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-33. Vladimir.
Resolution 2022-33. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing for budget amendment.
Vladimir Ortega, Finance Director. Resolution 2022-33 is for a total amendment of $4,317,723.50. And this is regarding, the first amendment is regarding the Corona Local Recovery Grant, which is the coronavirus, and it is, the City of Apopka was awarded a total of $7,373,07 to provide resources to meet pandemic response's needs. Some of these categories include support for public health expenditures, addressing negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, replacing lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and investing in the water sewer and broadband infrastructure. The first $3.5 million was received on July 12, 2021, and this is the second portion of the amendment, is the additional $3,518,653.50, which was received on July 14. These funds needs to be expended, shall be recognized via budget amendment, which is what we're presenting for the first budget amendment. The second amendment is related to the coronavirus and is part of what it was on the presentation for the cemetery paving and fencing project, and is for a total of $618,347. And part of that is the $231,377 that we're reallocating from the $2.5 million that the City Council meeting held on December 15, 2021, and that is just to reassign those $231,000. The rest of it is the $386,970, which we are requesting on a new amendment now, with the $250,000 for the Sheiller Oaks Drainage Improvement Project. That adds to a total of $636,970, which is the second amendment we are requesting tonight. And then for the information that Commissioner Velazquez was asking, we have a mini reconciliation on the presentation that's on your package. So we have got two amounts of $3.5 million each, minus the $2.5 million that you assigned by council on December 2021, minus the $636,970 that we're requesting today. That leaves a balance from the $7 million of $3.9337. That is the total we have that we still have available. The third amendment is due to the increase in fuel and gasoline, and it is necessary to operate through the remainder of the fiscal year that ends on 9/30/2022, and it is $146,800 from the General Fund Reserve and $15,300 from the Utility Operations Reserve. And all those three amendments total the $4,317,723.50 that we're requesting to amend for the fiscal year 2022. Any questions?
Any questions for Vladimir? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution 2022-33.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. City Council reports. Commissioner Nesta, why don't you start us out?
Mine are quick. I just want to say good luck to the students, kindergartners that are starting for the first time, and 12th graders that are ending their academic career possibly unless they're moving on to higher education, so good luck to them. We have the new school opening this year as well, Kelly Park, so that's exciting, and I'll be serving the teachers and staff lunch that day, Monday, so excited to see all the new staff and teachers out there as well, so that's it.
Commissioner Smith?
Is that open to the public?
Sure.
I just want to make you aware that there will be an event taking place at the Billard Dean Community Center at Alonzo Williams Park this coming Saturday, celebrating our seniors and empowering our youth, an opportunity where there'll be medical providers there to talk to our seniors about benefits that are available, and myself and several other agencies will be giving out backpacks to our youth for back to school.
Like 11 to 4?
What time is that?
I think it's 11 to 4.
11 to, yes, 11 to 4.
How about that? All right, Commissioner Bankson?
Yeah, actually, I already hit it there since it came up about, want to aim at our sidewalks there with school starting and other needs, I think that's it.
Good. Commissioner Velazquez?
Well, basically, of course, what Commissioner Nesta said with school opening up, he committed to breakfast, and we committed, well, I know I did with Chantay, with Reimagine, committed to do a welcoming early in the morning for Phyllis Wheatley on the first day of school. And then on a personal note, I just want to say thank you to Josh. Where's Josh? There he is. He took time out of his very busy schedule, and we went to address a constituents' kind of issue that has been going on for a long time, so I appreciate the time that he provided along with Ed Bass. And also just wanted to kind of give a shout out to our public services. My husband had called over two weeks ago for the backflow inspection, and they were there yesterday and very efficient, and it was a hot day. So the only thing I'm going to suggest is with these very hot and sunny days, if you can kind of provide an umbrella for some of these young men that are out there. I gave him a little cooler with Gatorade and water, but the sun was kind of beating on him, and he didn't have an umbrella. So maybe for some of our public service persons that are doing the backflows, because it does take some time to do it, so thank you to the public service gentleman that was out there and did the job. So just encourage our residents to please call our Public Works Department and do get the backflows inspected and replaced if you need them. They did an excellent job, so thank you very much.
All right, Edward?
So being out of pocket for a little while, I have to catch up on our financial update. So I'm just going to kind of go right to your point so you can see it. So as you can see from this slide, we are 1.3 more than what was actually projected for us in the current year that we sit in. That's a big number, I know. Keep in mind that who knows where we'll be as we move forward each month. We'll continue to monitor these numbers, but I think what's very interesting about this is we're projected to be about 1.3 more than what they gave us for an estimate in this current year. The projection for next year for these same dollars is $600,000 less than what you showed. So just keep in mind, so right now we're doing pretty good, but you're projecting $600,000 less than this number that you see before you, so.
And why is that?
So we have more revenue this year than your projection we're going to have next year.
And why is that?
I'm assuming, Commissioner, they're looking at the economy. They're saying that they think there's going to be a fall off later in the year, next year, 23, that could affect this number. But we'll keep monitoring this number every month.
And we've got one more forecast between now and when we have to vote on the budget. So we'll have one more forecast to see what their crystal ball looks like, and that's the number we use. We don't, some people fudge on those numbers. We don't, we're not going to fudge.
If the state gives me a number, I don't want to move the number.
The recession, that's not a recession.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, okay, awesome. Thank you, Edward. Michael?
No reports.
No report, all right. Mayor's report, okay, just a couple of quick things. We're doing the groundbreaking ceremony for the Harmon Road Extension, which, you know, is where our new Fire Station 6 will be built as well. It's going to be on August 19, and it's going to be where the old Apopka Okowi Road used to be. We'll have signage, it'll basically be across the street, across Binion Road from, I mean, Apopka Okowi from the hospital. So there'll be signage there, so you'll go down Apopka Okowi from downtown Apopka, and you'll make a left turn into where we're going to have the groundbreaking. So that's August 19 at 9:00 a.m. Next up, we've got the Kelly Park Road and Jason Dwelly Parkway signal is, should be flashing as we speak now, so that traffic light was up. And I know there's some of the social media sites out there said that they had a lot to do with getting that thing up and running. Well, we've been at that for like 18 months, so I, and just made it. So just today, we had some snafus with the power, and so Pam and team worked hard to get that done, and Duke Energy, give them a lot of credit, and our contractor, but should be flashing today, and I think we do it for two days, and then it goes hard, you know, red, green, and yellow. So it'll be up and running. You know, we put in, we've got a million dollars worth of improvements between the traffic light and all the sidewalks to get the walking distance for that new, our new school, so.
Are there warning signs there letting know the new traffic light is here?
Yes, 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 yes.
There it is.
Yep, and then the last thing, we talked about, you know, some, I know Commissioner Nesta, lunch for the new school, the teachers. Well, the school board member, Bird and I, myself, are going to be Wednesday morning at the Apopka Middle School bus stop, bus station, and we're going to have donuts, coffee, orange juice, and power bars for any of the bus drivers, because, you know, we always talk about schools opening and walking pedestrians, but also need to think about those school buses out there, the big yellow buses, so we've done that a couple of years in a row now, so a school board member, Bird and myself, will be at the school bus depot at 5:40 in the morning. That's when they need to, yeah, that's when they get started, get cranked up, and they're out the door before 6 o'clock.
You have coffee, donuts, and a power bar.
And a power bar, yes. So come on down, Commissioner Smith.
All right. By 45.
Again, we still need crossing guards, or did they fill all those positions?
We're still short a couple of those.
So we need your help.
I know we, yeah, but, so anyway.
Position, part-time position?
Yes, it's part-time, yeah. So anyway, with that, everybody have a good day.